It's a request, it's a request to release covenants?
Yeah, so we have a covenant in our file. All right, let me get my...
A covenant's in, it's always there.
I don't know, I haven't seen it. Title exam, we need to see what it says. That's what I said to Jen. We need to see the full text, we can't just guess.
Well, we should.
Hi, good. How are you?
There's a title, like a real title is in, yes. We should have got it.
Well, I said that. No? Yes. Exactly, yeah.
Is that where it is?
They were trying to...
You all set? I'm going to stand up now. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Could we please stand for the pleasure of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Did I ask everyone for a brief moment of silence in recognition of those and veterans who have passed? Particularly this evening, special condolence to the family of Kenneth L. Mattson upon his passing on 18 November 2019. Mr. Mattson served the United States Air Force during the Korean War. And to the family of Dino J. Brackey, upon his passing on 15 December 2019. Mr. Brackey served in the 3607th Ordnance Company, United States Army during World War Thank you and good evening, everybody. I just want to make an announcement just to remind you all that this meeting is being First thing on the agenda is our approval from our meeting on December 3rd.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve and there's a second. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. So, Councillor Souza's abstaining, so it's six to one. I have no announcements, no proclamations. Citizens' open forum. I'll entertain any citizen that wishes to come forward to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting. Is there anyone here wishes to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting?
Yeah, two microphones in front of you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Good evening. My name is Pat Neary, Lakeside Drive. I'd like to speak to you about a few separate items. One of them is very important and a couple others are just important to me, I guess. But some of you may be aware that there were five mattresses dumped down at the lakeside boat landing some time ago. One of my neighbors had called the police department about it on November 30th and was told that they, the police department, would alert the highway department to remove them. They are still there. So, I'm hoping someone can help figure out how to get rid of them because they will be an ice sculpture there all winter. And it's really disgusting when people do that, but we still have to clean it up. The other item I wanted to bring up is during recent meetings you've been discussing how to address the engine braking and the accompanying noise. And I had a conversation with one of the TPW directors over in West Bridgewater to ask how they initially addressed their similar problem. He told me that they just put the signs up and they've been very successful. They didn't go through any rigmarole, they just did it. That was at least two years ago. He said there hasn't been a need for enforcement as residents don't complain any longer and apparently the trucks are abiding by the signs. They probably feel that there is some authority there, even though there may not be. The only issue they had was they had to change their signs. Their initial signs read that there was a Jake Brake Regulation and that's a patented name, so they had to change it to read "Engine Braking." So, I wanted to pass that along to you and hope that we can still do something on the streets that are a problem with the engine braking. And finally, the proposed zoning change being presented by Councillor Souza is a very concerning proposal for many reasons. We realize that every opportunity to increase our tax base is encouraged, but this proposal is unacceptable. Zoning laws regulate the use of land and are designed for the protection of health, safety, and general welfare in the best interest of the residents. These changes that are proposed do not fall into that category. This is strictly trying to satisfy a developer and hopefully get taxes. Changing the residential zone to a planned development district, reducing the lot size in the planned development district, and eliminating the wetland setback, that's the most egregious. The wetland setback is required, it's at the lake. You folks know more about zoning regs and Conservation Commission than I do. However, I think our Mass Wetlands Protection Act will not allow building here on the bank of Lake Nippinicket, especially a restaurant in a flood zone. The residents of this area will not be supporting this negative incompatible use. I thank you for listening. I also want to wish you all a happy holiday and I really appreciate all the time and energy you put into your council positions. You have a very full agenda this evening and I'll probably watch the rest of it on cable.
Smart move.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Anybody else wish to speak, sir?
Robert Hanson, 568 Pleasant Street, Hanson Farm. This is concerning ordinance DFY 20-0004, proposed by Mr. Souza. We've been cutting firewood and selling firewood at the farm for over 50 years and you guys all of a sudden want to take that away. 20% of our income comes from firewood. If we don't have that 20% of income, that's going to be pretty devastating. Thank you.
Roger Lundin, 115 Ashhead Road. I'd like to speak on the farm and ordinance that might be coming up tonight, too. I don't think anybody's looked into how many people that's going to affect and how many businesses that's going to affect. And I think it's going to be a big effect on the residents paying a bigger fee to do tree service because of moving logs. I don't completely understand what they're trying to do, but I think it should be really looked at carefully because it's not a good situation for the town to add what they want to add to the present bylaws that are there. It's a pretty known factor that Bridgewater is anti-business and this is just one more thing to add to that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Janet Hanson, 665 Pleasant Street, related to Hanson Farm. I agree with what my brother-in-law said. This logging ordinance is confusing and I don't understand why it's brought up, what has happened to, you know, cause this concern. As Bob said, that it is a big part of our income and if they don't have access, I mean, yes, they can cut wood on the farm, but you can only cut so many trees and it supports two families and in the winter you don't have the income like you do necessarily in the summer. Not that a farm makes a lot of money to begin with. So, I just don't understand it and I'd like to have an explanation when the time comes to discuss it and hopefully it's not going to pass. Thank you.
You?
Hi, I'm Sarah McDonald, North Street. I recently moved here. Since I've been in my home for six months, we've had consistent water issues above and beyond the, you know, town water flushing and, you know, I want to understand what's going to be done to improve the water quality. I want to understand what the plan is, deadlines for the new water treatment, and I want to see what we can, you know, how we can improve the flushing process because, you know, clearly it's not doing a good job. I've, you know, lived in several towns over the past 20 years and anytime flushing's been done, it's, you know, no more than six hours. So, we need to look into what can really be done to reduce the amount of sediment coming in the water, whether you pressurize the lines in order to push the sediment out, just, you know, revise practices. But, you know, at the end of the day, the water is insufficient. I have a newborn and I can't use the town water to feed my newborn. There's, you know, sediment and amongst other issues with the water and, you know, I have a background in construction and I test my water regularly and I don't report it to the town, but the town needs to, you know, start being better about reporting water quality on a monthly basis, you know. I know testing is done at the current plant on a daily basis, but, you know, we need to inform the citizens and what you're drinking on a regular basis because it's just, it's unacceptable. So, you know, I look forward to hearing more in the presentation later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? And again, at the end of our meeting, we do have citizens' comments as well. So, moving on to item F, we have three hearings this evening. So, I will open the first public hearing, the time now being 7:43. Open the public hearing on petition P2019-029, transfer of stock and change of manager, Toknia Inc., doing business as Nick &amp; Angelo's Pizza Place. So, the public hearing is now open. I'll refer to the town manager for explanation.
Mr. President, this is actually a very simple change of ownership and change of manager, essentially going from father to son.
Is the petitioner here that wishes to speak on this or not? Is there anybody here from the general public with any questions? Anybody here from the general public with any questions regarding this license transfer? Is there anybody here from the public wishes to speak in favor of this license transfer? Is anybody here wishes to speak in favor of this transfer? Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak in opposition to this license transfer? Anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll entertain any questions from the councillors. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing at 7:44. I'll entertain...
Motion to approve.
To approve. There's a motion, there's a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's resolved. With the time being 7:44, we'll now move on to public hearing, petition P2019-030, alteration of license premise, Greyhound Group LLC, doing business as Greyhound Tavern. Public hearing is now open. I'll ask if the petitioner is present and if they wish to speak or if the town manager has any explanation on this. But I see the petitioner is here. Speak.
Good evening, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the town council. My name is Luis Di Amoreno. I am counsel for Greyhound Group LLC, doing business as Greyhound Tavern. Tonight, we have a petition before you to alter the licensed premises located on Broad Street and the alteration comes via a lease that Greyhound Group has acquired from the neighbor, the Godshocks. It's a parking lot currently that is approximately, fits about seven or eight vehicles and the proposal is that Greyhound Group would like to put out like a deck patio and serve their food as well as beverages and an outdoor setting, open air. It would be from approximately April to October, weather permitting. This goes in line with trying to rejuvenate the downtown area, having an open-air eating establishment, walkability in the downtown area, which would also help promote the local businesses along that strip as people will be coming and going from the restaurant, possibly walking by these businesses, doing window shopping and going into the businesses. The alter, where Greyhound Group does have a license presently for their establishment, the alteration is necessary because they're expanding their footprint. However, at this time, Greyhound Group is not looking to expand their occupancy. And at that, being that, it would still serve approximately 88 people, which is their allotted occupancy. And this, as I said, would benefit the town and help get some possible foot traffic in the downtown area, which has been an issue in the past. Greyhound Group, since they've opened approximately three years ago, they haven't had any occup- two years ago, sorry. No occupational violations to date. They've made it their priority to do the right thing. They will pull the permits for the construction if this is approved. They felt that it was necessary to seek this alteration first before spending money to do the construction as if the alteration for the permit wasn't allowed, then the construction would be essentially for naught. And Nick, would you like to say anything?
Just, ah, sorry.
There you go.
There we go. My name is Nick Plarmo. I'm one of the owners of Greyhound Tavern, so I just want to thank you guys for your time and looking at this. It's been a pleasure for we, had our two-year anniversary December 27th. I think the town has taken a nice liking to us, myself, not being from around here right now, this has been phenomenal. I've become, I feel a part of the community dealing with the local residents, families, the college students. It's been fun to get involved with local charities, the school system, youth football, youth basketball, Santa Claus coming to the Greyhound, all those little things, trying to establish ourselves as more of a family neighborhood restaurant that I think that was missing in this part of Bridgewater. And hopefully with the addition of an outdoor seating area, that will only continue to grow the downtown area, our business, provide more jobs for local residents, local students, and give the neighborhood another, another nice option, you know, come summertime. So, I do very much appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the public for general questions, does the town manager have anything to add regarding this?
No, Mr. President, I would only add that the applicants worked very closely with the staff and we're happy with the application.
Is there any, are there any general questions from the public here? Any general questions from the public? Please come up front and ask, or state your question. You guys don't go too far because you might have to answer them.
Good evening. My name is Richard Allen. I'm the proprietor of Chateau Jewelers at 51 Broad Street and I'm happy to see what he's done. He's done a vast improvement. It's cleaner than it's ever been before. The reason I'm here tonight is parking and I know there's no long-term solution for it. I've been in Bridgewater now over 25 years and I've seen it grow and grow and grow and the parking gets diminished, diminished, diminished. I'm not looking for a solution to the parking. I have a few opinions, like keeping the university students over at the university instead of having them park in our parking lot all day long. It's not good for business. I can't get customers, I don't make a living. I would like to suggest one item. Before I do that, I'd like to backtrack just a little bit. When Cumberland Farms was built, there were 21, 22 spaces allotted to the town. Fabulous, that's worked out well. The only problem I have is I need a crosswalk. Not a big expense. I'd love to have one with a flash and yellow light, but I don't see that happening. I have a lot of elderly customers, a lot of loyal customers. Some of them will come in and say, gee, I would have been here last week, but I couldn't find a place to park. I'm going to lose six parking spaces to Greyhound. Okay. If people could utilize the lot across the street and cross safely, and I'm out there every day, every day, I see the Texas coming by and they don't stop. It's amazing. Somebody's going to get hit. We've got to do something. It's a cheap solution. A couple gallons of paint, crosswalk, there we are. I have a lot of elderly customers. They can't walk up to the liquor store beyond Greyhound to use the crosswalk there. They can't do it. So, all I'm looking for is a little crosswalk there. It's going to have to come eventually with the new buildings that are going across the street. There's going to be more congestion. But I commend him, I commend anyone that puts the effort that he's put into a business and I'm behind him. But just need a little, little help along the way for us, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the general public here that wishes to speak in favor of this alteration? Anyone else here that wishes to speak in favor of this? Anyone from the general public that wishes to speak in opposition to this? Is there anybody here from the general public that wishes to speak in opposition of this alteration of license? Seeing none, I'll open it up to any questions from the councillors. Councillor George?
President, through you. So, just a couple of questions. I'm on Broad Street, I'm facing Greyhound, it's to the left, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because the only reason is on the drawing, I don't see it on here. So, I'm just, I'm just letting you know. I have to do it visually. My second question is entrance and exit, will that have to go through Greyhound or...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so no one be able to come out either end without going through your establishment to either enter or exit?
Hundred percent enclosed.
Okay, great.
Yes, with, just with an emergency exit at the back.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councillor Wood?
Sure, thank you. Nick and I started talking about this a while ago. I didn't give too much guidance other than call the town manager. And I'm glad to see that it's finally coming forward. I think there are some issues, not necessarily the restaurant issues, that we need to address in the area. The parking is definitely one of them. There are 42 spaces on the street, now that I counted them. There's always been a shared parking idea within the downtown revitalization plan. We need to work on that. That would help both the jeweler, Greyhound, and other businesses in the area. I guess my question is, do you, when do you, I guess during the summer, how do you see this taking place with like music and things like that?
Right now, ultimate goal is to operate it like as a restaurant first. There's no outside bar, it would just be tables, maybe little couch area, and then from there, look into, you know, obviously legality of outdoor music. My first goal was to, you know, hopefully get this approved and run it as is and then, and then from there, try to build upon it, whether it's live entertainment, you know, any outdoor events. Not sure, I don't have a long-term plan in place for that right now, but the first goal was just, you know, obviously I would find out any noise ordinances legality-wise of what we could do and what we can't do out there and follow those.
Thank you. Councillor Chase?
Just a question, if I may. What, you refer to the, the outdoor patio area being fenced and I'm just curious, what type of fencing do you envision for that area?
Right now, the general plan, I think...
So, I do see that council members are referencing the current floor plan for the building. Attached to the application, there was also a rebuild, if you excuse me. I do have copies of those plans, but where I saw there was packets, I assumed they were in there, so give me one second. This is a copy of the complete application. In the back with PM Construction is the plans for the construction for the outside patio.
Originally, when those drawings were done, it was, it was almost a six-foot fence on the front, some flower boxes, and then a six-foot fence on the back. I'd like to, as I look into it, is probably try to do four-foot flower boxes because legally I believe it has to be four. legally I believe it has to be 48 inches, um, 48 inches high. So four-foot flower boxes all the way around, um, excluding the back where it looks towards the Walgreens parking lot. That would be a little bit of a higher fence with the emergency exit would be, but ultimately in the front, it would be four-foot flower boxes, mulch, flowers all the way around up against the, so the front of the building or the, the front part, and then down the side where it's adjacent to the sidewalk for the God Chuck building to the side.
The, the drawings are towards the back, like three quarters of the way.
If I could ask a follow-up to that question, so?
Yes, sir.
So what you're anticipating is a structure like most other patio restaurants have, that you might see in the city, just a, a natural break between the sidewalk and the restaurant piece?
A natural break and then just so that people that you can see in, I don't want, I don't want it to be an enclosed structure that, you know, ultimately it's more of trying to aesthetically, you know, make it look a little nicer for, for the community and people drive by, um, also with some nice, nicer lighting and whatnot. So not just, not just in a closed space that no one knows what's going on back there, more so where people can see, you know, families, friends, enjoy themselves and whatnot.
Are you all set, Councillor Chase?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Mr. Colomotus?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. President. These are directed to Mr. Dutton. Um, so what sort of control in, in this process, they were to go, if this were to be approved, what control would the inspectional services have over the, how this thing appears? Is this a special permit or is it as of right or what do they, how much control do we have over the, how it's built out?
I think, um, I, I think the applicant would propose, um, of essentially fencing and, and, uh, minor amendments to the, the door, uh, entering the outdoor space. Excuse me. Um, and, uh, submit a permit application, and that would really be the only, uh, I don't believe there's any site plan review process or, uh, or anything along those lines.
So do our existing zoning bylaws kind of dictate what, how, how high a fence would need to be in this certain application?
Correct. Yeah. I believe there's a maximum.
Is there a minimum?
A minimal?
Yeah. I mean, I guess one of the concerns here is that you'll have people drinking outside and a parking lot where 14-year-olds can pass by and have something slip through the, you know, I guess that's something we need to be cognizant of, and I'm just wondering about protections against that sort of thing.
Uh, I think the applicant, uh, my assumption would be that the applicant would be very careful about how they, um, construct the fence, uh, specifically to avoid that instance, because that would obviously be quite a, a substantial violation of the liquor license.
So they have a, a strong incentive to prevent that.
Very strong, yeah.
And along those lines, what's sort of, um, have people been behaving themselves at the Greyhound? Have there been an excessive number of police calls to?
Uh, I don't, uh.
Can you speak to that?
Police department, um, was fully supportive of this, so, um, my assumption when they're fully supportive is that they've had no, um, no advert, or no consistent call volume there. But I can't give you numbers. I don't, I haven't heard of any.
Yeah. So if, if. Can I just finish? I, I mean, those are really my only two concerns. I think it's a great project. I think the notion of bringing people downtown to eat outside especially is really, really fits in perfectly well with our, with the consistent vision we've had for the revitalization of the downtown, so I, I support it. And I think the parking issues can be worked out, so I'm, full support.
So just to, just to let Mr. Colomotus know, in the, in the drawings, it has a six-foot full height for the fence. So I, oh, at least for me, that's good.
I imagine it looks a lot like what's the Riviera's outside patio fence and something nice on the front.
Correct, yeah.
At the, at the street side, so that you're not, kind of a spite fence.
Yes, that's.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Um, lighting. What are you gonna, are you gonna have lighting or on the patio? Is there going to be lighting?
Um, the plan would be.
Well, thank you. I didn't see it.
Um, like hanging the, I'm not sure the exact terminology, just kind of the, the rope lights that would.
Okay.
It would go from one side to the next over, um, probably at like a 10-foot height.
Okay. No stadium lighting, huh?
I'm sorry.
No stadium lighting?
No, sir.
Okay.
So I have no questions for you. Uh, I just wanted to say on behalf of the town, you know, that, thank you for taking the faith and commitment, investing your personal money into this establishment. I've been a number of times. We run a great business, and I, I hope that tonight this gets approved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Okay, with the time being 8:03, I will now close.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Make a hearing and entertain a motion to approve. There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Um, the current owners of the Greyhound, in my view, have been role models for what we want the business district to be. They've, um, the, the restaurant has become a place that is a destination, um, and we talk about parking. We hope to, you know, fix the parking. I think the street-level lighting is critical as more development on the street. The street is very dark, Broad Street. Um, as we try to evolve other businesses in the area, um, we have to make it safe. That means crosswalks, that means parking, that means adequate lighting, um, and then people will show up to go to a restaurant like Greyhound. If it's pleasant to sit out during the summer and have good food, then that's going to attract even more, and this is the role model that our downtown revitalization wants to follow. So I'm in full support of this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the time being 8:04, we have one more public hearing tonight. Petition P 2019-031, change of officer and change of beneficial interest, the 99 Restaurant. Um, I'll now open the public hearing. I'll ask if the petitioner is present and if they wish to speak, or I'll refer to the town manager for a brief explanation.
Mr. President, this is actually quite simple. It's, uh, just a change in ownership of, uh, of the 99, uh, corporate, and, uh, so this is, uh, comes to you as the licensing authority to approve that, uh, that transition.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Any general questions from the public? Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak in favor of this? Anybody here from the general public that wishes to speak in favor of this? Anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition to this? Is there anybody here from the general public wishes to speak in opposition of this change of officer? Seeing none, I'll open it up to questions from any of the councillors. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing at 8:05 and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So that's approved. Our public hearings are now closed. Seeing licensed transactions, we have a few. They should move further quickly. Um, 2020 annual license renewals. We have eight of them here for us tonight. Um, petition P 2019-032, annual renewal of the antique dealer. Do we want to take these individually or can we vote on these as a group?
Uh, you can vote on these, uh, how you please if, uh, if you want to vote on them as a group, but you have.
Entertain a motion for any.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve all the annual license renewals.
Second.
And just ask a question. I don't know if there's anyone on any of these that may have to recuse themselves if we need to separate anything out, Mr. Wood, especially because of downtown.
Traditionally, that would have been true, but the property near the center of town has now been sold, so I no longer have a potential conflict, uh, or perceived conflict, so I will be able to vote on lodging houses. But I would like to say that I think we should take these individually. It won't take that long, but I know there's some concerns within one or two of these that we should address, um, separately, and so I think we should just roll through the individual ones, so I'd, I'll be voting against taking them as a group.
All right, I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, entertain a motion on P, petition P 2019-032.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, there's a proven, there's a second. Any discussion?
Just that Joe does a great job with the rocking horse crafts, and I'm not sure why we can't fit his business into something else.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Petition passes. Petition P 2019-033, annual renewal upon, uh, secondhand gold dealers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Isn't GameStop closing? Do they need a license when they're closed?
They, they may not close by the end of the year, though.
Oh, okay. Just confirming. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Petition P 2019-034, annual renewal of the annual entertainment, no alcohol.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Petition P 2019-035, annual renewal of auto amusements, no alcohol.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Annual renewal 2019-036, lodging houses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. So on item number one, police chief has concerns. Can we hear more about that, please?
Yes, um, the, both the police, both chiefs, uh, and, and I have concerns about the operation of that particular lodging house, um, and the, um, frequency of, uh, emergency calls to that location. Um, the chief is, has not been able to reduce his, uh, police chief has not been able to reduce, um, his, uh, concerns to, into a report. Um, but I, at this time, I would recommend the, uh, renewal of the license, but, uh, I would put the council on notice that I anticipate a license revocation hearing, uh, for that particular business in the near future.
Any other discussion? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just, just to be clear, these annual renewals are really kind of pro forma. We, we do them, and it's not the appropriate place to actually take action and, and stop a license from happening. They have to comply with all the rules or they don't get their license, right?
Correct.
But when, when there's a, when there's a pattern of behavior in any of these businesses that concerns the town, there's another process to go through where we can address that behavior, and, and it's the legal means to do it.
That's correct. A process that, that guarantees the licensee, the, the due process, uh, rights that, that they have, but yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. Uh, petition P 2019-037, annual renewal common victualists, no alcohol.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Petition P 2019-038, annual renewal auto dealers class one, two, and three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Mr. Mr. George?
Yes, um, through you to the town manager. So we do have a notation on here, actually two, uh, for, um, Bridgewater Auto Parts for building and fire have concerns due to violations. License will be held until corrected, and also best auto parts, same thing. That is correct?
That is correct. Uh, I would recommend the passage of these two. Um, in, in the case of, uh, auto dealer licenses, there's a very strong incentive, uh, for the licensee to correct the issues prior to the end of the, of the calendar year, and that is, uh, because they cannot conduct their business, uh, at either the wholesale auction or, or the junk, uh, auction, um, unless they show an active license. Excuse me. So they, they cannot do business until, um, they receive the license, they can't receive the license until they've, um, fixed the, the pieces of, um, fencing is what the issue is, I believe, on both of those.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Petition passes. Petition P 2019-039, annual renewal all alcohol and related attendant licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? Mr. Wood?
Question on number 25. There was an email recently that there was a recommendation from the town manager not to renew number 25. Can we hear more?
Uh, that is correct. This, uh, particular licensee has failed to, uh, secure a permanent certificate of occupancy, um, and therefore could not, uh, get his, um, annual fire inspection, uh, nor his annual business, um, building inspection. Um, and so for those reasons, I would recommend non-renewal of this license, uh, and I would also recommend the scheduling of a license revocation hearing relative to that alcohol license.
So if I could follow up, so this is the same issue we had a year ago with this establishment, where we were promised that everything would be fixed, and it hasn't been.
Correct. So if we do not approve this renewal, when does this become effective? January 1st?
It, the non-renewal becomes effective January 1st. I'm told that, uh, presuming that the, the licensee appeals to the, uh, ABCC, that the ABCC will allow continued operation until they hear that appeal, uh, from the licensee. So just so you're aware, you may vote a non-renewal if he appeals, um, and I'm sure he would, uh, that he would be allowed to continue to operate, uh, until that appeal is heard.
Well, why, why are we going to go through all that, given what you just said about the lodging house?
Right.
Why don't we just say yes? Because then it's just.
Revoke it later.
A pain to go through all that process and schedule a revocation hearing at 8:00 AM tomorrow.
Uh, the reason, uh, alcohol licenses are slightly different than the other, um, licenses in, in terms of the pro, pro forma nature of them. Uh, the alcohol renewal, since he, it is, hinges upon, uh, the applicant or the licensee, uh, securing both a certificate of inspection from the fire department and the building office. Neither of those can provide a certificate, a certificate, a certificate of inspection, um, so that, um, that he cannot provide, uh, a fully, um, completed renewal application. So those are the two reasons you can, uh, deny a renewal, um, and so.
So, so to put it in layman's terms, essentially, he didn't get all his paperwork in, and we can, we can, we can say, sorry, you didn't get all your paperwork in. And that was essentially his, uh, due process and notice that he had to, he had to put all his paperwork in order, and he didn't.
Correct.
And so therefore, we, we're not only, we're not only able, but essentially compelled to say no.
I, I think you should for presidential value.
Right.
Because at a certain point.
I, I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, right now, there's a motion. To remove number 25?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to remove 25 from the list of all alcohol and related attendant licenses on petition P 2019-039. Any discussion on the removal? Seeing none, all those in favor of the removal?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, um, item 25 on the petition, the Telsens, Inc., doing business as Skip's Liquor, that 99-100 Plymouth Street has been removed from, from the vote we are about to take. There's been a motion and there's been a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'm glad we did those individually, Councillor Wood. Thank you. Next item, presentation. I talked to the town manager a couple of weeks ago after some citizen concerns, some social media stories and local, local media stories about the water issue in the town and I asked the town manager to reach out to our water and sewer superintendent to ask if he had the time to come in to one of our meetings to give us an update on what's happening. And I appreciate the town manager putting this on the agenda tonight, so I'll just refer to the town manager for the introduction.
Mr. President, I think you've seen him before. Jonas Kozlowski is our water and sewer superintendent and I know he has worked closely with StanTech who will give you a short, very short presentation. But one, let you know, I think many citizens are asking what, why is the water the color it is? And so Jonas can fill you in on that and then what we're prepared to do about the discolored water in the very near future. So I'll let Jonas introduce himself and StanTech.
Thank you. I am Jonas, water sewer superintendent. After the recent, the news article that we received, the bad water, well brown water, I reached out to StanTech, our water consultants basically, to prepare a slideshow showing what's going on in our system, what we're doing about it and what our future is with the water system. So, and they're also involved with the water treatment plant upgrade at the High Street well site. So I'd like to introduce, there she is, Katie Chamberlain from StanTech.
Thanks. Alright, let me, hopefully this still works. Alright, so, let's check this. So yeah, like Jonas said, I work for StanTech and we've been working with the town for many years, not me myself, but others that came before me have been working on the town's water and sewer system for quite some time. I personally have been working with Jonas for maybe about two years now specifically, specifically on the water system and the new High Street Water Treatment Plant. So I'll just give you guys a pretty quick presentation on what the town's been doing with regards to hoping to improve the water quality in town. So, quick agenda, what we're going to cover, where your water supply comes from in town, an overview of drinking water quality, a little bit on water quality regulations, particularly as it pertains just to the aesthetic concerns that the town has been experiencing. I'm not going to get into a big lecture of all of the water quality regulations that exist. Then we'll talk about what the town's been doing and we'll give you a status update on the High Street Water Treatment Plant project. So where does your water come from? So this is an overall big picture of the town's water distribution system and all of their infrastructure. You've got Carver's Pond Water Treatment Plant and the associated well field with that water treatment plant, kind of in the center of town. And then you have the Plymouth Street wells over in the far right, that little orange triangle right there. There's a couple wells there, so more groundwater. And then there's the High Street well field, there's four wells there and there, that is the site of the future water treatment plant that will treat all of the water from those four wells. So just a little bit of background of where does color come from in water? I know it can be alarming, it's happened to me at my own house as well, but most of the water, most of the color that exists in drinking water sources, particularly sources that come from groundwater, like the town of Bridgewater, it's pretty much suspended or dissolved particles that impart that color and with groundwater, it's almost always minerals, that's the iron and the manganese. So when iron and manganese exist as particles in your water, it'll show up as like a reddish, brownish rusty color when it's mostly iron and when it's mostly manganese, it'll show up as a much darker color, close to black. But in a lot of cases, there's iron and manganese together, so it can be anywhere, a range from kind of reddish all the way up to brownish, blackish. It really depends on what that blending ratio is of iron and manganese. So, another, an important thing to note that iron and manganese typically in groundwater is like as it exists in the ground is dissolved and it's colorless. Once that water is pumped and there's any sort of oxidant that it's exposed to and in your typical case, the oxidant would be air or bleach, it'll turn into its particulate state and it's, it's that particulate form of the mineral that actually imparts the color. So if you just go to the groundwater, pump out that water without adding any air or chemicals, there probably won't be a ton of color to it. It's all about when you add an oxidant. So iron and manganese, this, I like this, I've actually used this slide in a lot of presentations because iron and manganese is not an uncommon problem, particularly in New England. What this map shows us is that pretty much all throughout the northeast, all along the coast pretty much, there's a ton of manganese and iron in groundwater. It's just the type of rocks that exist in the earth. So it's super, super common in New England, in Massachusetts, there's tons of towns that deal with elevated levels of iron and manganese. It is naturally occurring. It's found commonly in soils and groundwater and another important factor is, you know, it is a natural component of most foods, foods are grown in that soil. So it'll, it'll take the manganese and the iron that's in the soil, it's part of our food system and it is necessary for proper nutrition. Obviously, when those concentrations of iron and manganese get to extreme levels that go beyond your normal food intake, that would be a concern, but those levels are extremely, extremely high. So how does that iron and manganese actually get into my drinking water? Like I said, it naturally exists in the groundwater, so when the water travels from the wells or the water treatment plants through the pipes throughout town, there's a lot of disturbances within those pipes, there's a lot of air that can be introduced. That water will enter through the taps in your house or through your dishwasher, your toilets, your washing, washing machines and as it's exposed to air or disturbances, the particles will form, they might settle out into pipes, they might end up settling out in your home fixtures if that's the case. So this is kind of how these particles just end up in the system. They naturally exist as they go from dissolved to particulate, they'll start to settle out in the pipes and get flushed through the system. And so these are horrible photos of what it looks like in like horrible, horrible situations. This is, these are not photos from Bridgewater, but it's just an example of what, you know, what a pipe can look like on the inside. Most people don't often get to see what pipes look like on the interior, it's very common for there to be scale and buildup. And if there's any hydraulic disturbance, for instance, construction, flushing, any sort of, you could just have like heavy truck traffic repeatedly maybe in an area that isn't used to experiencing heavy truck traffic. And if there's some sediment in there that just gets disturbed, the water's going to bring it further down the system, it could end up at someone's tap. And so how does this impact customers? I mean, I think, you know, I know some people here in the audience probably know how it impacts them, so this is just reiterating maybe what people already know, but it can, you can end up getting complaints of quote unquote dirty water if the particles from the bulk water are actually showing up in your tap. This typically happens when the manganese levels are greater than point oh five milligrams per liter and when the iron is greater than point three milligrams per liter. You can also start to see brown and black stains on fixtures like shown in that photo and then laundry spots. So like I mentioned before, if manganese and iron exist in the water in their dissolved state and then it's exposed to an oxidant, which bleach is, it'll turn black, brown, red. A lot of people use bleach when they do laundry. So a lot of times if people are calling saying that they're having like black or brown spots on their laundry, that means they're probably using bleach in a water that still has iron and manganese in it. And at super, super high levels, which are very uncommon to actually encounter, you can start to get a metallic taste in the water. So, real quick, iron and manganese regulations. So EPA has set secondary maximum contaminant levels, those are called SMCLs, for both iron and manganese. These are contaminants that are not considered to be a health risk, they just pose an aesthetic concern, so taste, color, odor. So iron, point three milligrams per liter, manganese, point oh five. These numbers are based on lots of studies that show on the average, people will start to notice color above those concentrations. For manganese, it's a little bit different than iron. The EPA did issue several years ago a health advisory due to potential neurological health effects. These are at very high levels. So that lifetime value of point three milligrams per liter, what that basically means is, is if an adult, myself, Mike, were to drink water consistently for their whole life at levels of point three milligrams per liter, that's when you would start to experience these negative health impacts. So, but you'll notice that that lifetime value of point three is much higher than the aesthetic level of point oh five that water utilities aim to meet. So the, the risk of reaching that point three milligrams per liter in your standard public water system is fairly low just because they aim for the aesthetic levels as opposed to the health levels. And Massachusetts does follow all the EPA guidelines. So what is the town doing to address these water quality concerns? As, as you've noted, you know, there is definitely some historical issues with water quality with color of water at people's taps. So what the town currently does is the Carver's Pond Water Treatment Plant treats close to fifty percent of the town's water and that water treatment plant is specifically designed for iron and manganese removal. The other two well fields currently are not, but what we're doing currently is we're in the design process for a High Street Water Treatment Plant that would treat another forty percent of the town's water supply. So that remainder of like ten percent on average of the town's water supply is from the Plymouth Street wells that does not have iron and manganese filtration. The town also does annual flushing to clean out the pipes and they're considering doing bi-annual or twice a year flushing in the future in the spring and the fall. That flushing is meant to specifically get out sediment, clear out sediment, which would be a lot of iron and manganese and any other sediment that exists in the pipes. The town also has been replacing water distribution pipes just this year, they replaced Wall Street and the Hayward Ave pipes and they plan to in the future continue to replace pipes that are old, made of materials that are not ideal and this is all part of the five-year capital improvement plan. One thing to know during construction, like I mentioned, water quality can be temporarily impacted just due to the nature of construction. There's a lot of hydraulic disturbances, a lot of turning of valves, water is changing directions a lot of the time, which can kind of stir up the sediment in the pipes. So unfortunately, when we do do construction in the water field, sometimes things get a tiny bit worse until they can really be improved. So just a real quick summary on the High Street Water Treatment Plant project, this is a nice little rendering of what the new water treatment plant will look like from the outside, obviously. So what this is doing is we're adding a brand new treatment facility that's designed to physically filter out particles such as iron and manganese from the water before distributing to the town. It is designed to supply water that has iron and manganese levels lower than the health based limits and the aesthetic limits. Basically the iron and manganese should go down, I mean, it will never go down to zero, that's, that's, you know, never can really reach that, but it goes down to as close to zero as you could possibly imagine with this type of treatment. It's very effective, very well studied, it's a known technology, it works great. Let's see, so with that, you know, the, like I said, the High Street wells provide about forty percent of the town's water supply, so when we do put this new High Street plant online, you're basically improving almost half of the town's water and it's not just going to impact the people that live right there, all of that water blends together, so it should impact the whole town. We're also putting in new generators so that we can have emergency operation of these wells just to maintain consistent water quality and consistent water availability in an emergency and we're also rehabbing all the old wellhouses. And the status of that project, actually just this morning, we got notification from the DEP folks that they had done a pre-approval of the state funding that goes along with this project, so that's great news. That was a big hurdle in getting this project moving forward. So what that means is now we can basically move forward with the one hundred percent design package that will go out to bid. We are hoping that everything goes out to bid in February with construction starting in June, which means we anticipate the construction is probably going to be eighteen to twenty-four months, so we're anticipating an end date of December twenty twenty-one. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions from the council to the water superintendent or Ms. Chamberlain? Mr. Wood?
I just have questions, so I think that's pretty close to the same presentation you gave budget finance a couple of months ago. Can we post that up on the webpage if it's not already there so others can see it? That'd be good, thanks.
Mr. Fitzgibbons? Did you have a question?
I think Mr. Colvin is.
Alright, sure. Thank you, Mr. President. So the upshot is that ten percent of our water will not be filtered for magnesium and iron, but that ten percent will be distributed everywhere, so.
When you blend that all together, that ten percent.
Will certainly eliminate that aesthetic concern.
Those wells, the other two wells are seldom used.
Right.
The other eight wells that we concentrate on, both sides of the town will have filtration now.
Right.
Didn't have on High Street.
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'm sorry, I missed your name, ma'am?
Oh, my name?
Yes.
Katie Chamberlain.
Oh yeah, Ms. Chamberlain, could you just tell us and everyone in the audience and the council and everyone listening at home, all ten people, however many it is, what, what your expertise is in this? Obviously you were hired for a certain reason and.
Yeah, I'm not just someone off the street that roamed in here, sure, yeah. I have been working in the drinking water field for seventeen-ish years at this point in time as a consultant, working for various utilities across North America. Once I moved here to New England, I actually have spent the majority of my time focusing specifically on iron and manganese issues because it is so common here, everyone has these problems, so I've pretty much been focusing on that for a couple of years now. I'm a chemical engineer with a water treatment master's degree, so I've, I've got the education, I hope I'm qualified.
Thank you.
So you would agree that the water quality in Bridgewater is fine, right?
Yeah, from a health perspective, everything that I've seen meets regulations.
So when somebody fills their sink up and it's got the brownish color, how should they react and what should they do?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously keep running it to let it flush out or what should they do?
Yeah, it's, it's a really good question because I completely understand the alarming state when your water doesn't look clear, like just, just to be clear, I totally empathize with that. So, nobody wants to drink brown water, I understand. I would say let it run, oftentimes the sediment is just built up a little bit in the pipes, particularly maybe it's a faucet that hasn't been used in a little while, let it run for five minutes or so. Do you have any advice that you would?
My advice would be if you see it come out of the faucet like that, call the water department. Usually there's a reason for it, something happened, a water main break, construction, could be anything. But we can give you the insight of what's going on in that area if there's something major happening. Like on Hayward Street and Wall Street, we had calls, of course, we would turn the valves on and off all day long, so there was disturbances there. And one other thing is really prevalent to Bridgewater is, we get construction everywhere, we got it by the nip. We have it down on Elm Street, we're going to have it on Curve Street, we have it on Cherry Street, we got it going on everywhere, so this town is growing fast. So we're experiencing all these growing pains with the water system too.
Mr. George?
Thank you. I did notice in the presentation that you're considering flushing twice a year, do you expect that to make a significant impact in the sediment aspect barring the construction and the water main breaks that might help alleviate not so much it happening, but maybe the amount that it happens?
What we, what we did in the past was if there were certain areas that were really bad in the fall, we'd revisit them in the spring, give them extra flushing. Like a lot of streets are dead ends and we've corrected that problem with looping all new water mains, so there will be hopefully no more dead ends in this town. So we address the heavy areas twice a year, we try to anyways.
Thank you.
Any other questions the councilors might have? Anyway, we appreciate you coming in for clarification, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the town manager's report where there are fourteen items that should take about an hour apiece, I'm sure he'll move as quickly as he can. I don't know who has specific questions or guidance, but I'll let you start and go down the list.
So why don't I start and go down the list? I don't have a lengthy report on any of these, so, so if you want to just wait and ask me a question at the end, that's fine or interrupt as the president wishes. On the Mitchell School, as you know, the Mitchell School rebuild, Mitchell School Building Committee has been meeting on Mondays every twice a month. They have, actually so people know, it's generally held on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, right here in the council chambers. The committee's doing some further reviewing and refining of the floor plan, the exterior, the interior design elements, so forth and certainly anybody's welcome to go to those meetings, but they're just beginning to flesh out the details of the, of the building project. Still on, still on pace for, still on schedule, so that's good. Update, update on snow and ice limitations, I think this was a request by Councilor Wood and if there's a perception out there that, that we're slow to get snow off the streets because we can't afford to get the snow off the streets, that's clearly not the case. Our limitations are, excuse me. Our limitations are really not being able to find contractors and, and other folks, employees that can do the work, so our private contractor. folks, employees, uh, that can do the work. So our, uh, private contractor rates are actually very good. Uh, we pay about eighty dollars an hour for a, uh, an all-wheel-drive pickup truck with plow, and, um, and then obviously, the larger pieces of equipment you have, the more, uh, the more per hour that ends up being. But just so you know, um, we pay either at or above the area towns. We're right about exactly where, uh, the Department of, uh, Transportation, Massachusetts Department of Transportation, uh, pays on an hourly basis. So we're certainly not, uh, we're not on the low side by any means. So it's just a matter of finding, uh, the, the manpower and the woman power to get the job done.
Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Um, recognizing that we cannot overspend snow and ice, and were we to want to attract more people, could you raise the rates that you were paying?
We certainly could raise the rates, um, but we've found, uh, history has shown us that, that raising the rates doesn't necessarily get us, uh, any additional contractors. Um, there, there are, um, you know, we've tried that, we tried that, I believe, two years ago, uh, raised them fairly substantially, um, and everybody else sort of has come up, uh, to close to around where, where we weren't the leader in raising.
And that would just, that would just negatively impact the following year's free cash and what was available from the cherry sheet, but it's a trade-off that could consider, conceivably be made.
Correct. Thank you. Um, but just to illustrate, we had, um, on the December third storm, we had forty-five, uh, private pieces of equipment, um, in addition to the town pieces. Um, last year, we had, uh, for the winter, we had between, uh, forty-seven and fifty-five private pieces of equipment. Uh, the prior year, we were closer to seventy-five pieces of equipment. So, um, over, over the last three years, we've seen a substantial decrease in the number of people that are interested in, uh, in using their equipment and, uh, and plowing the road. So, um, so that means that more of the slack is sort of taken up by, by our folks. Uh, we have very specific plow routes. We used to have ten plow routes, we now have eight plow routes. So it takes a little bit longer to get the, the routes done. Um, but, uh, but overall, uh, they do do a great job. Um, the highway superintendent let me know today that they've already gone through eighteen hundred tons of, uh, salt and, uh, and, um, melt, so, um, so they've been out there certainly. Um, winter started early this year. Um, so moving on to the McElwain, um, and I should go back, I'm sorry. The, the, anybody that is interested, um, in, in plowing for the town, feel free to call the highway department, um, and they will certainly, uh, take your call and, and let you know what the details are. So if there's anybody out there interested, um, in, in, um, being a snow contractor for the town, please call the highway department. Uh, McElwain update, uh, we did, uh, receive a notification last week that, uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development had approved the pre-application, um, for McElwain, and the full application that now, uh, is due on February twentieth. Uh, I was told today that final, uh, funding decisions are made, uh, early to midsummer, probably early summer this round, and then construction should begin in full four, six months after that. So, uh, we would be looking at construction, um, underway, uh, probably less than a year from now, so.
Is this essentially another s- case of hurry up and wait with the state, like with the Mitchell? You, you have to get it in by this deadline, and then you can wait for us to tell you when, and then, then you're going to get this in by this deadline, and you can wait for us to tell you when?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And then, at what point would we receive the payment? At, before construction started?
Absolutely. Yep. Once, once the, the, uh, DHCD funding commitment is, has been made, then it's a matter of, uh, attorneys doing the documents that are necessary, um, and then you can have a closing. My guess would be a few months after, after the, uh, the notification of the award.
One time, one proceeding, though.
Fire Station Building Committee, we did, uh, I think I had mentioned, we had an organizational meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, and the chair of that committee, your fellow councillor, Rushton, uh, conducted a tour, I think organized a tour of the fire station last weekend, so that, uh, committee members could see sort of firsthand, those that weren't familiar with the building could see firsthand what the, what the issues in there are. So, um, I think there was some, some surprises, um, from some folks on that committee, um, about exactly how bad the conditions were. But I do give a lot of credit to the, uh, the firefighters and the fire department overall. They've, they've, uh, done yeoman's work, uh, to keep that place, uh, afloat, and, uh, and certainly, they've not complained, excuse me, they have not complained, uh, at all, but I think they're very excited to see this process start.
Excuse me, Mr. Dutton, can I just interject? What exactly is the charge of that?
Charge of that committee is to, um, review, uh, what will be the feasibility study that, that, uh, the consultant that we're going to hire is going to conduct and then make recommendations, um, to me, that I will bring essentially to the council in terms of how we're going to, uh, plot forward. But council eventually will have to make decisions about, uh, the siting, um, the potential partnership, um, that may come about, uh, to, to construct a, a multi-agency or, uh, at least a dual-agency, uh, building, um, and, you know, basically all those decisions. But they'll, they'll provide that advice. They'll, uh, ultimately provide, uh, some advice, um, on space needs, um, you know, training space needs, um, and stuff of that nature.
Location, certainly.
Location, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Um, memorial building renovation, uh, the community preservation committee has asked for some, uh, additional, um, revisions to the proposed plan, and so we are going back to the architect to see the, uh, if those revisions are feasible. Uh, I should say the, the CPC and the, uh, I don't believe it was a complete, uh, complement of Historic District Commission, but I think there were a fair number of representatives from that committee, so we had a joint meeting with the architect and, and, uh, some good, good debate and good, uh, suggestions out of that. So we'll, uh, we'll be revising, hopefully revising the plan, uh, a little bit before we go back to CPC. Um, regional school agreement, um, I, I don't have anything new to report. I know, uh, everybody's been busy, but, um, but we, I would expect that would get back underway, uh, soon after the new year, so, but I don't have anything to report there. Uh, Elm Street, uh, we've actually made great progress. Uh, contractors a little bit ahead of schedule. The, um, uh, I don't know if anybody's been up there, but it's pretty, pretty dramatic. Um, we did, we're able to get, um, help assist Columbia Gas with a waiver. Uh, if you recall, the governor, um, in the state put a, a freeze on, um, the ability for Columbia Gas to do any installations. Um, we've asked for two waivers, and, uh, Columbia Gas has secured, uh, at least one of those right now, and then I anticipate the other one coming soon. Um, they will be replacing, uh, the gas line from First Street to Sophia Lane, and then installing the new line from, uh, Sophia Lane up, up to the town border. And that relocation of the existing line should be done by mid-January, and then, uh, and then they'll continue on if all goes well with the line extension up, up to the town border. Uh, Columbia Gas, just so folks know, Columbia Gas, uh, representatives will be going to residents, uh, along Elm Street who are currently not tied in, um, to determine whether or not they are interested in tying in. So they'll be, um, they'll be out there making sure that anybody that's interested in tying in gets, uh, gets a tie-in and, uh, and a stub, um, prior to the road construction, uh, restarting early in the spring, so. Um, but also, um, veri- stunningly, Verizon National Grid and Comcast are working, uh, together on, uh, about thirty pole relocations. Um, so that is good news as well. So, right now, uh, general contractor Resendez has, uh, has essentially, uh, demobilized for a good chunk of the month, and then, um, and then they'll be back at it in, uh, late January and early February to do some more of the site work, uh, that's necessary, uh, once the gas line is, is moved. So that's, that's underway. Broad Street, um, I actually had a conversation with Mr. Pascal this week, and he has, uh, committed
Again.
To, uh, to completing his submission, uh, early next week.
So, Mr. Dutton, we have not received an application from the owner for the development of Broad Street.
Correct.
So...
It'll be, it'll be in on Christmas, though, early next week.
It, I mean, um, I, I think personally, um, the next conversation is, we need to move forward on what we can do to start rectifying that eyesore in the center of town. And I, I think everyone in this room and anyone who's paid attention is tired of me saying it, and I'm beyond tired of saying it. But these conversations have gone nowhere. He has promised us everything and has delivered nothing. My question to you is, we did have conversations in regards to safety inspections. Have we done that yet? Is it scheduled? Where does that stand?
Um, I don't have an update on that, but I can get, certainly get an update from the building inspector.
I, I would, I would implore that that becomes a high priority. Um, and I'm not trying to do this to be vindictive, but those buildings are a concern of ours. And I think they're a concern to other people that have businesses in that area, people that walk by, people that drive by it, and we will not be doing our job if we just let that sit until, God forbid, something were to happen. Thank you.
And in addition to that, and I totally agree, is the graffiti. We were going to reach out to him to have at least the graffiti cleaned up.
Uh, and I'm, I am, well, I can report that he has, um, committed to take care of that right away.
Yes. As right away as we're getting the application, or, or further or sooner? I don't know.
I wasn't going to be the one to say it. Um, Opportunity Zone, um, we are, uh, working with an architectural rendering artist to develop some marketing materials on that, so, uh, so I think, uh, Jennifer Burke will be, be working with them and give, uh, Community and Economic Development Committee, uh, some, some, uh, renderings on, on what it could look like. Um, the good news is on overall, um, most of action on the, on the, uh, Opportunity Zones nationwide, um, really hasn't, uh, hasn't shaken out yet, and I mentioned this, I think, last meeting about, um, final regulations that have effectively just come out. Um, but there, uh, what, what, nationwide, what, what professionals are finding is that money managers and investment advisors really aren't, uh, educated yet on, on the Opportunity Zone benefits. So, so once that happens, um, again, there, you know, I think people that know a lot more than I do about it are anticipating quite an enormous flow of, of capital into, into Opportunity Zones. I think I may have also mentioned that so far, it's been, um, storage facilities. That seems to be a popular, uh, thing to go into Opportunity Zones. That's clearly not what we're looking for, uh, in our Opportunity Zone, and it's, quite frankly, not appropriate for it. Um, so, but we will, uh, we will continue, uh, pounding away on, on that one. Grants, I put down grants. I just want to let you know that we'd had, um, what Katie Chamberlain already, um, stole my thunder on the project approval certificate for the, the High Street Water Plant. We've also, uh, been notified that we received a $225,000 grant from DHCD for the replacement and installation of water mains on, uh, Curve Street, which is, uh, is great news there. Um, and we've also got some additional funding from DEP to, uh, add charging stations, uh, at the library parking lot, so that's good news as well. Um, road engineering, uh, the RFP was released. Um, for road engineering, what we've done is constructed an RFP that, um, that allows, uh, engineering, qualified engineering firms to give us a, a price on a per-road basis. Uh, we figured that this is probably the best option. Uh, also reserves us the opportunity to hire more than one, uh, road engineer, uh, and not be, um, not be stuck with just one, uh, engineering firm for, for that work. So that is out there, um, and, uh, is due sometime towards the end of, uh, mid-January, seventeenth, I believe. Um, capital plan, when you see the capital plan, uh, next month, uh, it'll be quite a lot more robust than you're used to. Uh, it's quite a lot more robust than I'm used to. Um, and, uh, but the finance committee obviously will be, uh, working with the finance director to, to look at that. Um, it, we've tried to capture literally every capital, um, item that, that we can possibly think of. Um, so we have a, we have, uh, more internal, uh, work to do to prioritize, uh, before we propose an actual spending plan to the council, but we've looked ahead, um, clearly looked at five years, uh, really longer, um, and what, what we'll have on, uh, on the overall capital list will, will provide you, uh, hopefully, with all the information you could possibly need to, uh, to make decisions about, about our capital spending. Um, what we've also tried to do is be very careful about tying the capital, well, other than prioritizing, tying, uh, potential capital expenditures to operational, um, impacts. So, um, for instance, you know, um, refurbishing a building or renovating a building, making sure that we add, um, you know, the maintenance, uh, making sure that we acknowledge the, the cost of the operational budget to continue to maintain that building the way it should be maintained, so. So that is, uh, also a piece of it. Um, master plan, uh, that schedule's been extended a bit, um, and we are, um, uh, looking for completion in June, uh, and then on to the planning board. The zoning recodification, uh, had a public workshop last week, and, uh, and again, that, uh, that is scheduled to get to the council, uh, next month, probably your second meeting, um, to adopt a wholesale, uh, recodification of, uh, of the zoning. So, um, and I just, as a reminder, um, the recodification was not designed to, uh, do any wholesale policy or, or wholesale changes to zoning. It was designed to put our zoning, our current zoning in a, in a condition, uh, upon which the, the council can then, uh, make, um, changes based upon the master plan recommendations, so. So that is, uh, that is what I have, but happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions to the town manager in any of these fourteen items? Seeing none, just to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rushton?
For you to the town manager, just if we could, uh, I know that we, the fire building committee met and looked at the RFP. What is the timeline for getting that out?
Um, my, uh, timeline was last week, and, uh, I am just awaiting, uh, some, uh, indication from, uh, Bridgewater State University to make sure that they are okay with some of the terms and some of the language I've used in the RFP. But, um, I suspect, uh, before the end of this week, it'll be released.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just have a question on the Opportunity Zone update. We've talked about it several times, and I've tried searching on information. Where is the best place to go for people to find information about Opportunity Zones? Because it's, it's downtown. We've talked about it in conferences, the fire station, et cetera.
So, uh, I will make sure that we have, uh, something on the Community and Economic Development, uh, webpage, um, if it's not already there about Opportunity Zones. Opportunity Zones in general, um, the Commonwealth has, uh, the state of Massachusetts, um, uh, executive office of, uh, well, it's one of the exec-, but they have a pretty good, um, they have a pretty good breakdown of what the Opportunity Zone really is. It's, um, you know, if you Google Opportunity Zones, um, you'll get a whole host of, of, um, white papers and guidances from, um, from a variety of, of different investment houses and so forth. But I'll make sure we have something particular to ours if it's not already there.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that if anybody has anything they'd like the town manager to, to report upon for our next meeting, to let him know either tonight, or, or let our council clerk know, or let our council clerk know prior to the agenda being released, and our next meeting is not until January, uh, seventh. Moving on to any discussion items, I see none. Committee reports, are there any committees here tonight that wish to report? Uh, Mr. Wood?
Um, I'll report that, um, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee met earlier this afternoon, uh, this evening, along with a subcommittee of the Finance Committee, which was great. They formed a, a committee of, of their Finance Committee. Members met with us, uh, to discuss, among other things, um, the resolution that hopefully will appear on the next, uh, next meeting agenda. So this is the annual budget resolution. Uh, we talked about some specific numbers within that and a couple textual changes. Um, it's important to get that done leading into the budget season that the town manager and the, and the finance director undertake so they have guidance from the council. We also, um, voted on, and I don't have my notes because I gave them over to Ann, but, um, the items under L that we had for, um... um, the items under L that we had for, um, action tonight, we, um, we voted on those as well, and, and recommended on, on all of them.
But we can't move forward on them tonight.
No. That's not my committee.
Only A. Any other committees? Ms. Loesch?
I just want to remind the council that they have the, um, evaluation for the town manager in their inbox, and it would be helpful for it to be completed by the end of the month so we can continue the process in January.
Thank you. Any other committees? So moving on to legislation for action, um, we have ordinance FY 20003, general ordinance, Town Council adoption of amendments to the rules and procedures. At the meeting held on November 26, 2019, the Rules and Procedures Committee voted three to O to recommend proposed amendments. The Town Council voted seven to O, seven to zero, on 11/3/2019 to adopt proposed amendments and send to advertising for final consideration. This measure has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website, therefore may be finally considered this evening.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion?
Just, I'd, I'd like to, um, thank all the people, uh, Ms. Loesch, Mr. George, others that helped put this together. We had reviews of, from several other people. Hopefully they clarify changes. This is the first major change we've made in years, um, and I think they're all good. So hopefully the council supports them.
Any other discussion? Uh, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor or none against?
Excellent. Okay, um, just going to postpone B through F because we do not have a recommendation from the finance committees, so we'll just put these on our agenda for, uh, January 7th. There is no old business, new business. We have two ordinances this evening, ordinance FY 20004 and 006, the general ordinance, amendment ordinance 20, D 2012-014, right-to-farm ordinance, which was proposed by Councilor Souza. And before I refer to Councilor Souza, I just want the general public to know that under this form of government, um, any council can propose anything they want to propose. It doesn't mean that it's, at the time it's proposed, that it's endorsed by all of us. So this is the beginning of how the legislation process really begins in Bridgewater, as far as an ordinance being proposed by an individual counselor. This does have a sponsor, Councilor Souza, so I'll refer to him for explanation, and then we'll decide on whether we're going to refer it out to a committee. Councilor Souza?
The, um, the way the ordinance was written in the town, and you look at the one at the state, the town ordinance leaves a lot of leeways to interpretation. And meetings with, uh, a town manager and, uh, Jennifer, we thought that we can do a better job of making it, uh, better understood. Uh, there's been a lot of feedback already on it, and one of the things that we'd like them to all know is, this is not going to be voted on this evening. It's going to go to the board, and at the board meetings, everyone will be able to have their opportunity to come in and speak on it, and it, it could be amended if the language could just be straightened out a little bit, but it's got to be clarified. And we have to have legal businesses operating legally in town, and some of them are not. And that's what we're trying to work on. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to, uh, refer it out or not. Uh, it's up to the, it's up to my calling.
I'll make a motion to refer to the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Second. All right, there's a motion to refer to the Community and Economic Development Committee, and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. George?
Yes, um, I, I, I understand probably the intent of taking the right to farm and, and trying to make it more prescriptive. Um, you know, Councilor Souza said there's probably a lot of ambigu, ambigu, I can't say the word, ambiguous language. Um, I would say having two, uh, businesses in my precinct that are specifically tied to both of these, um, I think the intent is going to be such that, um, it's going to be detrimental to their business. Um, it does not mean that I wouldn't support something that firms up what we're trying to, um, what we're trying to get here around control, but control should not be, uh, an elimination of, um, their, their supply for their business. Uh, I, I'd like to have this go back to, um, Jennifer and more discussion and list some of the businesses in town that are going to be adversely affected by this, and try to get something in place that satisfies everybody, um, instead of putting it to a committee. Maybe that's the discussion point, but I, I would rather put something to the committee that we probably have the majority of the people in town, the business in town, that are for it versus just shuffling it off and having, coming back, because I, I'll be brutally honest, if it comes back in this form, I will not support it.
Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I, I'd kind of echo a little bit what Counselor George said. Um, you know, we've heard countless times on, on this council that, um, the town is not open for business. We heard tonight in Citizens Open Forum that the town is not open for business. Um, the town manager is working very hard to prove, in fact, the town is open for business. And, um, you know, to, to do something like this and go off, uh, on a tangent like this and, and not think it through is not appropriate. At the same point in time, I think it is important to send it to the Community and Economic Development Committee to get that input from the town planner, et cetera. And that way, it's not, uh, I don't know if anyone that was affected by this knew this was coming forward before tonight or before they saw the agenda. Now they can go to a meeting, they can express their concerns, they can, um, they can help, you know, change it, kill it, do whatever you need to do with it, and everyone can be heard in, in that, in that forum. So, uh, I, I am with Counselor George. If it comes back like this, it's, it's a definite no for me, but I think the appropriate process is to give everyone a chance to, you know, have their say on it.
And on that note, I, I, I agree with you and I agree with Mr. George, um, but I will say, I mean, as the town manager reported earlier, you know, we have, uh, an opportunity zone update out there, we have a capital plan update out there, we have a master plan update out there, and we have a zoning recodification update out there. We have all these studies and consultants out there looking at the way we do things in town, particularly when it comes to zoning. And I think that with, with all respect to Councilor Souza, these, if these studies are going on, which they are, you would think that if what you're proposing and the issue behind it isn't, is a problem or an issue and needs to be rectified, that they would come through those studies with a recommendation. That's just my hunch. I don't know. Um, and I don't know if it goes to a Community and Economic Development Committee of the council that maybe they would refer it to those, um, individuals studying those elements of the, of the town. That's just my thoughts. Mr. Chase?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Well, actually, just in response to your point, uh, the town manager has also this evening stressed that the, uh, the zoning rewrite process is largely a codification effort, and it is not intended to implement policy changes. Uh, so really, um, in a sense, I feel that the appropriate place to begin the discussion would be with the, um, Economic Development and Community and Economic Development Committee, together with, uh, Jennifer Burke, to solicit some, uh, some input. And certainly, I'm sure the degree of public interest in the topic, as evidenced tonight, will produce valuable input at that meeting.
Thank you. I, I mean, my understanding is, is that I would hope to see some recommendations of zoning changes through this study. That was the intent, a part of the intent when it came to it, but that's another discussion for another night. I don't want to go there right now. Um, but I hear what you're saying. Councilor Wood?
Thank you. Um, several years ago, we put the, uh, right-to-farm ordinance in place, I thought, to protect farming. Farming, sometimes it's noisy, sometimes it's smelly, um, sometimes it's other things. When I first read this, where it's bringing forestry products into a farm, it would not be allowed, um, I thought immediately the Hanson Farm with the Christmas trees. Trees are forestry products, and, you know, I don't think we're talking about banning trees at Hanson Farm for Christmas trees, but, you know, taken liberally, you could, you could think that. I know the idea needs to be vetted, and sending it to committees might be the right way. In a, in an item like this, it'd probably be best to work through a process first before we got to the point of actually changing the, the ordinance itself. There's probably other things about the farming ordinance, uh, we want to loosen up, uh, animal, uh, ownership, things like that, that the planner should be focused on, among other things that, that that office has. Um, so I, I guess I'll probably support going to committee, but I'd like to see the process opened up where we have more discussion and we talk to the people that are affected most before this comes before the council for a vote. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Souza?
Yeah, okay.
Uh, first of all, I want you to know that I had several meetings with the town manager and the Community and Economic Opportunity Director discussing this issue. Okay? So I didn't just sit in my little room at home and put this idea together. Uh, I had their backing, and we all felt that it was a great way, and we've seen this happen here in this council before, where we have a subject that we want to bring up, and here's where it starts. And from here, it goes to committee. And from committee, you have a public hearing, you post it, everybody is aware of the fact that here's the evening, here's the subject, come and join us. This was my thought from day one. It still is today, and we can sit here and shoot it down the pike and pass it on to the committee, or we can just throw it away. For what purpose? Let's give everyone an opportunity to come in and speak at it, especially Jennifer, and let her see what she sees out of this, and we go forward in correcting it. And if, like Mr. Wood said, it, maybe there's other things in that ordinance that we have to look at at the same time. But let's open up the dialogue, and let's get this hearing started, and let everyone come in and have their input.
Anybody else? Okay, so there's a motion, and there's a second to refer it to the Community and Economic Development Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that's, uh, eight, eight to one to refer it out. Ordinance FY 20006, zoning ordinance, amended zoning bylaws, section eight and nine point six oh. I'll refer to Councilor Souza on this, if he wants to brief explanation.
Okay, um, we've all talked about having a nice upscale restaurant here in town, and what this is, is we know we have a large complex up by the nip, where they've got the hotel, they've got the office buildings, they've got a big apartment complex, they're going to build another one, and they were looking to put a nice restaurant there. They're looking to purchase the land across the street, remove the house, they will have the land from the edge of the parking lot from the boat ramp, all the way to the first house up the street. Okay, because that's a good long distance, and they want to take that and they want to put a nice 6,000-square-foot restaurant right on the water. It's going to have glass wall facing the river, the pond, or a brook, whatever you want to call that thing, and the pond. And then they're going to have a patio. So they really want to build a nice upscale restaurant there, because they really don't have one in the hotel. And what they said was they have a number of different parties that come in, like wedding parties and stuff to stay there and everything, and when they have their rehearsal dinner and all that kind of stuff, they have to leave town, go find a nice place, and they're going to have that facility right across the street. Plus, it'll be open to all the general public, and I've seen all the drawings and everything on it, and it's a really, really nice place. And most of the parking will be to the left of the building as you're facing, uh, the nip. Okay, so it's, it's something I thought was worthy to go forward, and that's why I've put this in, to help get that passed.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to refer this out.
Make a motion to the, uh, C E T C.
There's a motion to refer to the Community and Economic Development Committee. There's a second.
Mr. President, this, since this is a zoning amendment, it would be appropriate to refer it to planning and community and economic development.
I'd like to revise my motion to include...
Okay, so there's a motion, and there's a second to refer to the planning board and the Community and Economic Development for a joint public hearing on this ordinance. Any, any further discussion? Mr. George?
Just a que, just a question, and for my own edification. Um, so this is for a specific parcel of land, correct?
Correct.
So, why wouldn't this go just for a variance instead of going through a zoning ordinance?
It's been joined together.
That, I mean, if, what, why, if you're talking about a specific lot of land, we're not talking townwide, why do we have to go through an ordinance and not a variance?
That is probably a question better answered by, uh, Jennifer Burke, but I can get that answer.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I, my whole over thing is, we're, we're sending stuff to committees, and I, I agree with that, but I think sometimes, and, and, Mr. Souza, please do not take this personally, it's not directed towards you whatsoever, but I, I look more of a zoning ordinance change as something that is going to affect the entire town. And I, and I think honestly, and rightfully, a lot of people think this is going to change wetland setbacks and, and acreage and things like that, um, when that's not the intent of it. So I, I would just like to go in the, in the right direction of, if it's specific to parcel or parcels, it should be a variance, not an ordinance. But that's just my question.
I, I can get an answer to that question. I, I, just as a reminder, property owners can come before the council and request zoning changes, so, so, you know, this is really a result of that request to make a zoning change.
Right.
But I, I can get an answer to the question about the variance.
Because in fairness, too, the property owner, I, I'd like to give them the direction of what's the best route for them to go, and I'm not necessarily sure this is the right route to go for them. I, I don't know. That's, that's, that's my question.
I'll get you a better answer.
Okay.
I know, I know, um, we are trying to, to shy away from the issuance of variances for a number of legal reasons, which...
Okay. There's a motion. Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second. Mr. Columbodis?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Dutton, so this, are these parcels owned residential now?
I believe they're currently zoned residential.
So that's probably the answer to Mr. George's problem, uh, question, in that the ZBA would be, it would be really negligent to allow a restaurant of that, of any size in a residential neighborhood, right? So that's not really a fruitful path for them to take. And given, I guess, given it's across the street from the, the Plan Development District, it's seen to make sense to incorporate into that district.
Correct.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
They'll probably also want to crosswalk with flashing yellow lights, just so you know. Um, so I, quick question for our attorney. Is this what would be classically known as spot zoning?
I was thinking it as it was being read. I, I think, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very well could be. Um, I, I tend to agree with the town manager that there's probably some other reason, and it, and it probably is. We are looking, I believe, under the new, um, ordinances to get rid of used variances conceivably, and so that might be another reason. I, I wouldn't want to speculate. I, I'm sure the developer has their own attorney, and there's probably a reason they've done this, that the town manager or I would not know.
Okay.
And I certainly wouldn't want to speculate as to what their legal strategy is relative to why they're trying to get the project through this way as opposed to another way.
Yeah, and that was not my intent whatsoever. This is more from an education perspective.
Absolutely.
Mr. Columbodis?
Thanks. Another question, Mr. Dutton. So if this, these parcels were, were converted, moved into the Plan Development District, and a pro, project comes forward, they'll need site, site plan approval, um, but it would be an as-of-right use. It wouldn't, wouldn't need a special permit to build this restaurant on that parcel.
I believe that's correct.
Right. Because, so if you don't have that special permit process, which affords the planning board a lot of control over what the project's going to look like, this, there might not be a whole lot of control with this.
That's possible.
If it's as-of-right. And I just kind of want to make that point that Mr. Souza says, you know, there's, they describe it as being a nice restaurant, but I think in looking in zoning changes, it's important to consider what the worst-case scenario would be, just to protect the town's interests. Yes, they say they're going to build something great, and it's going to be that, but then oh, things change and we end up with something you don't want. So I think, I think it's important that we all approach any sort of zoning change, and yes, you could aspire for great results, but you do need to guard against the worst possible scenario and see what that change allows. possible scenario, and see what that change allows that you might not want, so.
Correct. And I do think that the process that's laid out, you know, allows the council, or certainly allows Community and Economic Development Committee and the planning board to make recommendations about, you know, how, whether certain provisions are correct, they can propose, or I should say, recommend changes to the amendment language that's provided.
Right. Certainly possible.
Okay, so there's a motion, and there's a second. All those in favor referring this to planning board and Economic, Community and Economic Development Committee?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that goes to committee. Citizens comments. Are there any citizens here that wish to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting? Anybody at all wish to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting?
Janet Hanson, 665 Pleasant Street. About the two ordinances, first one on the zoning one, I didn't catch where the restaurant, restaurant wanted to be. Is it across the street, along the nip? Right at the nip? I don't see where there's enough land there, but I have concerns, like, Mr. George, and I'm sorry, I don't come back. If you change the zone, you're not zoning it specifically for a restaurant. It's zoned, and you hope that it's going to support a restaurant, but it means anything could, that's approved, can go in there, and so it's, I'm concerned about the water buff, you know, the environmental impact, and also, the nip is beautiful, and that's a part, you know, gateway, not necessarily the gateway, but it's, you have in a restaurant, it's going to block the view of that, but doing a zoning is not going to say it's only zoned for a restaurant. Am I wrong in that reading? It's not zoned just for a restaurant. Anything could end up going in, so that would be my concern to have everybody consider. And back to the farming one, I still, I was waiting to hear a reason as to why, Mr. Souza or whoever, that this came to be to begin with. What brought it to be that it was of a concern? That I haven't heard. I haven't heard the reason why it was brought up. And to limit, well, personally, the farm for my husband and brother-in-law, to not be able to bring lumber, or, excuse me, logs in to self-cut up for firewood, is going to be very harmful to our business, our family life, our economics. And they've been doing it for many, many, many years with no issues. So why now is it of concern? There, you've got people logging, they do cut some wood, but you have people that have to cut down trees to fill this building in Bridgewater. They have to do something with those logs, so they sell them to people that are going to do something with them. They do something with them at the farm, they cut them up for firewood. People need firewood, they come, and it's an all-year-round thing now, people want firewood, and you're going to affect a lot of businesses by putting this through, and I still have yet to know why it's become a concern. So just to consider that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting? Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll now open it up to council comments, and I'll start with Councilor Souza.
I'm not going to say anything else this evening. I'm already under the bus.
Mr. Chase?
No particular comment, but I would certainly like to be the first, if I may, to wish everyone a joyous holiday season. I hope everyone safely enjoys the holiday and has a terrific family gathering.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. First, happy holidays to everybody. As you all know, the TJ Robotics season is going to start in a couple weeks, and I'm really looking forward to participating in that again. I've been on the town council representing District 6 continuously since the very first meeting in January of 2011. In that time, we've accomplished a lot. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time on the council, and feel that I have accomplished many goals for the district and the town, including leading the effort to install the high and Broad Street traffic signals, creating the annual budget resolution that has brought our reserves up to a safe level, has funded many capital projects, leading the effort to build the first administrative code for the town, and leading the process to purchase open space, which will provide access to the St. Hart Park behind it. You may have noticed that for the past couple of months, I have asked other councilors to co-sponsor legislative items I've created. When a sponsor is not present, the agenda item cannot move forward, and I believe that everything that I have submitted recently deserves to continue forward. I have been on the council for seven years, several years. Now is the right time to take a break, ending my continuous service on the town council. Effective at the end of this meeting, I'm leaving the council. I'm resigning as the town council representative for District 6. I look forward to service, serving the town again in the future after a personal break. Thank you, and good night. If you can get that to Dennis. Thank you.
Mr. George?
Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Rushden?
Well, to Councilor Wood, on behalf of all the residents of the town, and certainly all the councilors, you know, thank you for your service to the town, and on the many committees that you have served on, and the things that you've accomplished in betterment of the town despite what some people may think. Every person truly starts out with a good intention to try to improve the town for everybody, and I hope to do that, sitting on the building, excuse me, the fire station building committee, and the many other committees that I'm sitting on now, and as a councilor. And with that, I would just wish every resident in town a happy holiday.
Ms. Loesch?
A second, what Mr. Rushden said.
Is Mr. Colombodis there? No?
No, I don't believe--
Should I stall long?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Should I stall long enough for him to get back? No, happy holidays to everybody, especially my fellow councilors and all the, all the folks in town. We are, we are getting into winter, and we have been hit by a few storms lately, and I'll take a page from my friend Keith Beul's book and say, make sure you check on your elderly neighbors, and make sure they're okay in the cold weather. We're going to have a really cold snap coming up, and make sure they're okay shoveling. Lost a friend shoveling snow in that first big heavy storm we had, and, you know, not a very elderly man, in fact, younger than me, but, you know, it's a reminder for us all to take care and take care of each other. Thank you.
I'll go back to Mr. Colombodis, if you have any council comments.
Nothing. I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays, and I hope everyone enjoys time with family and friends.
Thank you. I'm shocked, Bill, I didn't expect this tonight. I know your term is up in, in May, and I understand the personal commitment that you've made to this town for nine years, almost, for nine years, and I certainly appreciate the efforts you've made. We haven't always agreed on everything, but we have agreed on some things, and when, when the end of the day, we can all sit down and have a good laugh, and that's what it's all about. When you can't do that, then it doesn't really work. But I, I wish you the best, whatever you do, I'm sure we'll hear from you, read from you, and see you around, because I think you're a valuable asset to the community in anything, Lions Club, whatever, whatever you do, so I'm sure we'll see you around, and whatever, you know, personal decision that came to this tonight, I respect that, and I wish you well. On that note, I wish everyone happy holidays, and we now go on our three-week hiatus until January 7, 2020. We'll be right back here. We do not have an executive session this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.